I call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. The first item of business will be the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Corlick, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Okay, we have minutes from special to go in camera. Those are not exciting. Motion to adopt the special going camera from November 12th. Counselor Krog, Counselor Corlick, all those in favor? And the public meeting feedback from November the 12th. A motion to adopt that, those minutes. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Regular meeting of November the 12th. Motion to adopt those minutes. Counselor Corlick, Counselor Krog, anything arising from those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a correction on the minutes. I talked to staff before that it'll be in the race. Okay, that's all I had, thank you. And the only thing I was looking for is under number eight, where I recuse myself just at time of when I left the room and when I came in, that's all.
So mind your corrections, postkeeping corrections. Okay, a motion to accept those minutes, all those in favor? Carrie? And council reports, and no one got in on time, but we'll start with verbal reports. Counselor Maslin?
Your worship, I did, I want to thank, I guess, basically Les Johnson for filming the committee of the whole meeting and the regular meetings, as well as the floodplain mapping presentation. I did, because of his volunteerism and skill, I was able to follow those and not participate, but at least view those. So thanks again, Les, and for your good help. Thank you.
Try to follow the rules. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the RDKB meeting as an observer, and I also did the same with the GSSAG.
That works for services advisory group?
That's it, thank you. I also attended a boundary museum meeting, and just to say that their 40 by 60 building is almost complete. They've worked very hard at getting it together, and it's been, they've worked hard. And the volunteer firemen have helped a lot in getting some of the, I think, insulation and some of the dry walling done, so it's great. Daniel Drexler joined us and discussed the new requirements for fee for service that will be coming in the future, it's not right now. And so he did a good job, and I think it was well received, so I'm very happy he did come. And we also had the floodplain mapping meeting at the high school, which was an interesting process, and it was nice to see so many people there. And that's about it for me, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Krog?
Nothing at this time.
Moving around, Counselor Zelinski. Counselor Thompson, I know you did submit one.
Well, I didn't submit it in time to get it on the agenda. But I attended a meeting of the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group on November 14th. I advised that council did not support the request for the city to make inquiries of IDHA regarding if they would be interested in leasing the former nurses residence slash Williams transition house. It was felt that the GFSSAG should be the agency making the request, and if the answer was positive, to work with BC Housing regarding a service provider and funding. The intent, their intent is to attend the December committee of the whole meeting as a delegation with an update. Monday, November 18th, Urban Systems publicly presented an update on the floodplain, floodplain mapping. While the turnout, I felt, was somewhat disappointing, I felt that the information presented along with the slides used as visual aids was very useful. Thank you to our staff and Urban Systems for the preparation and work they put into The Boundary Early Years Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, November 19th. Of interest to me was an update on child literacy. The child's, the library's child reading program is well subscribed and is a valuable service to the community. C-Ball has done a fundraising by selling gazettes. This year, they partnered with Coyote Books to host a blind date with a new book that exceeded their expectations. Child care is always an issue. We were advised that a 20-hour course on responsible adult slash family childcare is available. Louise Heck at Boundary Child Care Resource Center would be pleased to meet with anyone interested in more information on this topic. Inconsistent funding is always an issue with the continuation of programs provided, which is frustrating to both providers and parents. I inquired if there was a noticeable impact on children who may be living in poverty, including being homeless. Their response was that schools are very welcoming, and there is less shame if a student arrives late. Further, all schools provide breakfast for all students. C-Ball has partnered with the school district and holds an after-school reading program twice a week in each school. This includes healthy snacks for those children attending.
Thank you. Counselor Studley?
Nothing much. I also attended the flood mapping presentation and the TPA's HEM, which just happened right before we all got here. That's about it.
All right, any further comments between councils? Motion to accept the council reports. Counselor Corlick, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Regional District, Counselor Corlick and myself reporting here. We haven't had a regional district meeting for a bit, but if there is one on the 28th, then Counselor Corlick will be attending. The, we had a change of leadership at the regional district. Diane, please.
Langman.
Langman was elected as the chair, and that's about all I can say. Counselor, did you have anything?
No, it was one of the shortest meetings I have ever attended. No, that's it.
No, and so because they met for that reason, we haven't conducted business for a while, but it will be on 28th. That's my report. Can I have a motion to adopt that report? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Krog, all those in favor? Okay, and that brings us down to the recommendations from staff for decisions. First item of business is reconsideration of the development variance permit for 7,500 Donaldson Drive. And the motion that we're looking for here is that the development variance permit application for Donaldson Drive be brought back for consideration. That will require a vote of, a unanimous vote of council. I'll open this up for discussion. Counselor Maslin?
Yeah, Counselor, Mayor, your worship, should I move that before we?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'll move that motion.
And a secondary for that? Counselor Studley? End opening for discussion?
Yeah, briefly, your worship, I do want to say that it's not just the request of the mayor, but also from the legal advice that the city has received, that this would be an important strategy in helping to deal with the weed suit of the city.
Did we get a secondary? Oh, sorry. You seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay, sorry.
So, that it would be a cost-saving motion, a way of saving legal costs. I would not commit council to indeed passing the development variance permit, but just could be a way of saving significant legal costs. Thank you, your worship.
Further comment?
I speak in favor.
Counselor Thompson?
Bringing this back for council's reconsideration is not, it allows the process to be brought back. We were challenged on it, and so this allows the permit to come back to council for reconsideration, and I will be supporting this motion.
Counselor Krog?
Yeah, couple of things. I supported it the first time it came around for the variance. That motion was defeated. I'm not sure if it'd be more palatable, or if it's even possible to try and meet the thought process behind it, example is signage. And yet, like, we're talking 100 meters, right? So if it's not visible, in that 100 meters, does that make sense?
No.
Okay. I'll try and reword it.
Yeah, I think you're driving at the fact that we should reconsider that 100 meter in general, as Counselor Zelinski has suggested, we revisit this as quickly as possible. It's a tough piece of art to work with. So if that's what you're referring to, I understand. Any further question? Ready for the question? All those in favor of reconsideration? Thank you, unanimous. Next item of business is the application for rezoning on R1 to R2 for 1711 77th Avenue. At this point, we're being asked for first and second reading, so it would go into a process of consulting with public. Can we get that motion on the floor? Okay, so the motion that council get first and second readings to rezoning at the November 25th meeting, direct staff to move forward with the legislative requirement. That's the motion on the floor. Who seconded that? I'm sorry. Counselor Corlick, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we not miss an item?
I'm sorry, did we miss an item?
You did, but if you want, you can continue with this one, and then we'll skip back and catch 8B.
Okay, well, let's dispose of this one first. So the motion is on the floor, first and second reading, and it's going to public process. All those in favor?
Question?
You made the motion.
I made the motion, yeah.
Question?
Question, what are they planning on that lot? Why the rezoning? What's their idea?
It's a bit of a review.
Yep.
No, you skipped that one.
It's quite a large lot, and it's long and narrow, and so it's just subdivided to build another residence on the line.
So he's looking at for two?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? opposed, carried, what did I miss?
8B, temporary use permit for 6380 12 Street.
I missed that. Okay, and I'm familiar with this one. This is for a temporary use permit for six months that would accommodate damage that was done during the flood. So they're looking at a, no, six month, a three-year period of time for temporary use on that site? I got it right this time?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I missed it. Comment on this? Counselor Maslin?
Yes, your worship, I see that in the application, they did talk about wastewater's being pumped.
Yes, I saw that.
So I was thinking that there is no septic field involved, is that correct?
They're not convenient to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this gentleman has survived two floods, because they got flooded in 2017 and then got flooded again in 2018. He's from Kelowna. Their intent was to retire on that property, but after being flooded twice, they realized that that probably wasn't a great idea. So they'd like to get some use out of that property, and so they're asking for this seasonal recreational use. They do have a water service there. It is a farm property, or considered farm, it's in the ALR. And, yeah, so they would have, just the tanks from their travel trailer would be pumped on a regular basis, and they would just be here during the summer and warmer months.
So it would be for three years with a renewable closet?
Yeah, that's the standard for temporary use permits, and he can reapply in three years, and council can revisit at that time.
Okay, Counselor Maslin?
Yeah, through your worship to staff, then, I've been wondering about other services. I'm assuming there would be a power pole then of some sort for electricity?
Already there.
Okay, as well as, you've said a water service, is that city water or is that groundwater?
It's city water.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments? This is to move it to public notice with respect to the temporary use permit. Motion is made by Counselor Zelinski, seconded by Counselor Corlick. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, the next item is M-I-A-B-C. This is a matter of Wendy Whalen and addition of her to our associate member for coverage for liability primarily. Can I have that motion? Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corlick. Okay. Discussion on this, this is pretty standard procedure, we've done it before with M-I-A-B-C. No further discussion, all those in favor? Carrie? Moving us down to bylaws. Counselor Thompson? Zoning update from emergency shelters, supportive housing.
Yes, your worship. I would look forward to a resolution that this item be, I'm not sure if it should be tabled to deferred.
Do you have a specific timeline in mind?
I would like to work with council and hopefully with Les Johnson to defer this to a public hearing, or public.
Discussion.
Yeah, workshop, where the community who have concerns with respect to some of these definitions and locations can comment, and we as council and staff can take those comments into consideration.
You're arguing your deferral?
Actually, I'm supporting my deferral.
Second you for that motion, Counselor Zelinski. So this is non-debatable?
Yeah.
At this point?
So it goes.
Can we ask for the question? All those in favor of deferral? So your vote was in favor, it doesn't matter, there's only two against.
I don't matter.
You didn't raise your hand, so.
I was just wanting to defer till when, or till when?
Yeah, we should, we should establish that.
To the public meeting, public conversation?
Till after, public discussion is set up.
A public workshop, not like a COTW meeting?
On a separate day.
Okay, a separate.
There's really not enough time to address something of this nature.
No.
So two workshops. All right, so, do you want to put again?
No, I carried.
Okay, thank Carrie. Except for Counselor Maslin, did you wish to speak to?
No, your worship, I just, those were my questions, that you just, there was no date, and there was no clarity as to what we were deferring to. So basically, those were my concerns. I guess I better have a quicker hand. Sorry, your worship.
Well, the way I run meetings is rapidly here, I don't expect you all to keep up. So that's it, we're down to the end. And again, opening for questions from the public and media? Can we ask if there are questions from the gallery tonight? Mr. Johnson?
Okay, well, I had a little bit of discussion before this meeting started, and I don't know why I can't carry that on here, but I would like to have that discussion with council at some point, and hopefully in a public forum where I can talk to you about that. But to answer Counselor Thompson's request here, I'm available. It's definitely in my wheelhouse, as they say, and, yeah, sure, just let me know ahead of time, so I don't know whether somebody else has got me doing something.
Well, this is why I want to work, you know, with staff and yourself.
Sure, no problem. Okay.
And on that other issue, I feel that you introduced it informally to us, and that we could continue with the discussion at a later date on that matter.
Maybe you could talk about it alone yourselves, I mean, it's, you know, whether or not it's this topic and particularly what I was talking about, for the future, it's something that local governments everywhere, especially in the age of Facebook, will have to face.
Correct. Counselor Zelinski?
Question back to you, Les, what does our communication policy say?
I'm not exactly sure what your communication policy thing is regards to Facebook, really, I don't know.
Or social media, media in general.
I don't know, and I was curious whether the provincial government had given you any guidance on that, that's to know.
Ms. Palmer?
For the, for the people that are watching right now, perhaps Les would like to actually explain what it was, he started talking before council meetings started, so they know what's going on.
You know, I'm not recommending that, because I think we need to talk amongst ourselves about that, but Les, it's your call.
Yeah, I got it though. Okay, I'm not trying to throw gasoline on a fire, okay? Please, don't take me on here, but the Local Government Act says that you can only meet in a quorum or more, at a legally constituted meeting, which means that if you're at a barbecue or some other public function, and four of you is a quorum, if four of you get together and start talking about something which will then, in some sense, come before council, you're conducting a rogue meeting, I'm not sure what the government's official meet. The wording for that is, but you're literally not meeting together in a setting that the public has been notified with, that you can come to, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a big no-no when it comes to the higher level of government, of which you are a child of, so to speak. So those rules were created in a time before social networking was such a big deal in our lives, and a number of people remarked that how, how much Facebook has, how much this town does Facebook? I mean, that's why I stream it on here, because more people will understand how to comment and participate than they would be on YouTube, an alternative. So the thing with Facebook, social networking, is that it can be used to, for like-minded people or people with common concerns, to gather foreign groups, discuss and plan all those things. If you remember the Arab Spring, there were probably a couple of governments in the world who just hate the hell out of Facebook because it was successfully used that way. So what I'm getting at here, simple, there is a group in town, I still live in?
Yes, I am, I love how you're pointing out us.
There's a group in town which is a special interest group, and the special interest group is very, very involved with certain things that come before council, that council has to do with, to deliver it with, et cetera. And it turns out that that group, the way Facebook is structured, you can apply to join, but if you're not part of the group, you cannot see what's going on inside the group, I believe, that's the way it works?
Anybody can join, we do not cut off anybody. Anybody can.
But if you're not part of the group, can you see what the group is doing?
No, because it's not public, because a lot of people don't necessarily want to be part of a public group, but that does not mean we deny anybody from going, anybody can join. I find it very interesting that the people with the largest voice of dissent against C4 have never even been on it, and have absolutely no idea what's being said on it, and yet they're the ones that are going out and saying, "We're a hate group," right, Mr. Tanner? So this is very interesting in my mind, because if you don't know, if you're not part of it, you have no idea. We are a voice for the citizens of Grand Forks. We are trying to get people to discuss what's best for our city, and that means anybody and everybody. And so far, we've got probably one of the largest voices on Facebook.
Do you want the camera?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. I was just asking her if she wanted the camera on her. Okay, and she's made a very impassioned explanation of what the group is about, and I get that, people have concern, people do have concerns. The group exists to deal with real concerns, is another member, are you a member? I'm not sure, another person who has something to say about that, so let's.
I don't know if we're members or just concerned citizens. We don't sign up for it or anything, we are just the average person in Grand Forks that want to understand what's going on and how to better the situation.
No, I do understand that.
You bring this up, Les.
That is not what this, that is not what this topic of discussion is about.
So anyone can join?
Yes, no, no.
Brian Taylor, has Brian, have you been on it? Have you actually been on?
I have seen what is on the group.
You have not, and you're not part of it.
Wait, wait, please.
Become part of it, then you get to say something.
I'm trying to point out that the discussion is not per se about this group, but about the fact that.
Well, then why did you pick on it?
Let me carry on, please. The, my discussion here is simple, my discussion is about.
I'm going to call for an adjournment.
Okay, sure, no problem. Which is why I didn't really want to talk about it now, because it's like pouring gasoline on a fire.
Thank you. I am on several groups, because as a counselor, I want to know what the, what is being said, what are the concerns. So I am on the group of C4, I am on the HAG group, I was invited to join that, and so I'm on that. I don't comment unless I have something factual to say, to correct what may be out there. That other members of council may be or may not be on the same groups that I am. We don't, we don't have our own group, if that's what one of the concerns is, is that council has its own Facebook group, because we do not. And so I think any concerns with respect to illegal readings via Facebook is not factual.
Okay.
The only reason that I, you know, I just wanted to sum this up.
The reason Les thought it happened was the first question was, do we have a social media policy?
And you have guidance from the government?
That was the reason you introduced this.
Right, because five members, five elected members of this body are part of a group which is not public, that is directly involved in lobbying this body about things which are important to the community. So I'm not saying that the group is wrong, what I'm trying to get out here is the fact that that's not democracy. Any discussions that happen in that group, that these counselors participate in, and the fact that nobody outside the group can know for sure what's being talked about means that there's a possibility that people might think that there are nefarious goings-on in there, even though there aren't. Democracy is one of those things where, like conflict of interest and trust, there's a perception that strongly colors whether or not the population believes in it, and if the population doesn't believe in something, they'll go, "Oh, why should I vote?" If all they have to do is join some Facebook group. That's all.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking that at this point, we should close this off, can I have a motion?
Last one, sir.
Excuse me, you'll have to override the chair.
Okay.
You challenged the chair.
Do you want to be ready to speak? Yes.
Okay, I'm being challenged in the chair and my ability to allow me to speak. Can we bring that to the motion?
I'm sorry for.
Yeah, no, we have to go to.
You challenged the chair?
Yeah.
And can you add a secondary to that challenge to the chair?
Yeah.
We have all those opposed to the chair's position, all those for the chair's position, we lose. We have Neil?
So groups, and what influence a group has on you, what you say. So I belong to Boundary Neighborhood something Smokers Log, which is to Boundary Neighborhood, something, Smokers Log, um, which is Grand Forks, Grand Forks, B.C., Grand Forks Twenty-four Hour Bid War, WTF Grand Forks, What's Up Grand Forks, C-four, Citizens, Contractors Corner, The Soapbox Grand Forks, B.C. for Trade Barter, grew up in Guilford, Grand Forks and region, Boundary Neighborhood, Watch, maybe, South Rockville, Grand Forks and Boundary, Northwest Barbecue.
Would you like to wrap that up and generalize it?
And Soapbox and Cater Bud, so...
I applaud your commitment.
I, I know. So, town manager, see ya.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? No. No, I'll give, challenge the chair again. I'm cutting this off. I think this is the best of the...
Oh, wait. What?
Sure, sure. I, I don't want my, my short meeting to go, uh, unchallenged.
I could've said a new drink.
Have you got a bet on, like, seven thirty or something?
You guys, you know, open these, these, this is not our procedural bylaw to open up debate at this level, when we're asking at the end of a meeting. So, you're a stickler for rules. Are we breaking our own rules, sir?
No, I didn't, not that I know.
Counselor, what would you like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Les, on your point that if, um, four or more counselors get together, that it might be constituted a quorum?
Mm-hmm. Well, it would be a quorum. It might be constituted as a rogue meeting.
Yeah, so, if you take that to the nth degree, um, I guess four of you have to decide who's not going to the Christmas party, because it's a closed function, and we have more than four of us there.
Just don't sit together.
Well, at a discussion at the bar might happen, who knows? So, anyway, um, there's...
Are you going to be lobbying at the Christmas party to something next Christmas on council? I mean, yeah.
Order...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
And have a motion to adjourn. You can continue on your discussions after the meeting. Please, a motion to adjourn.